Now they looked at that one there.
They did.
That needs so much. It really does, I mean i- it's too bad cuz then the new part of it that the guy's building is is gorgeous. But the rest of it's fallen down around him while he's building this. This the off the back of it, i- it's like.
What's it going off the back, I haven't seen that.
Oh, it's it's all brand new, it's like.
He's rebuilding what fell down.
Yeah, and then upstairs is they got sliders and. It will be very nice when it's done. But i- he's doing it all by himself, so it's a very slow process.
Was the first guy.
So while he's doing creating new, the old is just falling down around it.
Think I've seen any activity in here since I've been coming to town, is that correct?
Closed.
Yeah, he's never, he hasn't been go- nothing's been going on, but he's been working on the back.
The sheetrock in there is all blowing down, the insulation behind is all moldy and stuff like that. All that has to come down because otherwise it's gonna be a mold city uh.
Is it wood frame over stucco or is it actual block?
It's it's no way.
I actually can't think of any good places where. No derogations, he's not coming in?
Yeah, well, he was on the agenda for eight o'clock, sorry, um either I'm, you know.
Eight o'clock?
I'll think about some places.
I called him, so.
There was one right next to the medical building.
No, no, that one Peter is minor site uh minor cycling, he just added a um.
You think that's a possibility?
Doing a flea market on Sundays.
I know it's a possibility, the owners will accept it.
One of the neighbors thinks he should have a little pocket and come to have a cycling.
Problem is, what are we gonna get? But as far as the location goes. I showed it to the people there.
Store.
Huge.
That was their their best spot.
The church lets out, the place is loaded.
I mean, I think it's a great thing to keep doing, you think that. Out of town is a coming to flea market, they're gonna go to Alises, they're gonna go to Almeida's, they're gonna, you know. Might stop at the hardware store, you know? I mean, that's good, it's just.
Before I retired, there was a. A um I we had a proposed building to go there and.
You know, that's not a bad location. Because that's our job.
We gotta find a place for him.
Well, we gotta find a place to put the medical. Right.
How do you guys feel about the um next to the medical building, the existing medical, Dr. Hoy's office?
The old building?
No.
The uh va- vacant space there?
Yep.
Uh just behind, is that uh is that, there's weapons?
You mean across from my cousin's house?
Yeah, I uh that's kind of, it goes into a residential.
Yeah, that's right.
Good night gentlemen.
Good night. Tell Mary I said hello.
The guy who lives in that house Joe, you know the blue house there? He shows up to a lot of meetings.
Carrie?
The guy who lives in the blue house, used to be Alfred Torres's house. The very first house.
Yeah, Carrie, right?
I know when they were building Dr. Hoy's, he was wasn't happy.
Really?
Yeah, he wished for full company, I think.
Yes, Carrie.
So you mean to tell me that he's going to repose whatever goes on there?
He didn't want Dr. Hoy's office when that went in. You know, further on down the road there, is that Drakea? No, that's Titan Stove Company.
Titan Stove Company, next to the veterinary.
Next to the vet?
To the vet. No, I'm talking about by what used to be Raytheon Springs Street.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Draca, yeah, Drakea?
So their whole place is. They're working three shifts there. So their whole place is probably. Not much room to left down and right in there.
Nope.
Unless.
No.
The parking lot by the river, which nobody uses.
Could be a perfect place for it cuz there's nothing around there.
The Graves property?
Yes.
Which property is this?
But I believe that Vicky, I believe that she um.
That's where Pam wanted to put Jerry Remy's, remember?
I believe that. I believe that Vicky talked to the Grays about that and they weren't interested in putting a dispensary there.
No, they wouldn't be, no. The Grays own that property?
Yeah.
You sold it to them?
Yeah.
Oh, not that property.
Oh, which one?
Off Warner Boulevard, part of the uh parking lot, there used to be Rayteons.
Oh, where they store things over there.
Yeah, there's a whole big empty parking lot there, who owns that?
Yeah, I think the Raytheon does, right? Uh the mill, no?
Uh I would think so. It's just on the other side of the railroad tracks.
Yeah, I know now, I know what you.
Right next to the river, the river's the line, right?
So you proposed your your ideas to put the um.
Put it right there, they could carry it over from where it's grown over to that place.
Big rocket over.
Build build it too.
That's right.
There you go.
Hey, that might be worthwhile, who knows?
So you're saying that they would have to build a building?
Oh, they'd have to divide the property, build a building and.
Which I don't think they're against, right?
No, they would be. And I'm sure.
Didn't sound like it when they were here.
That's about the only place I can. I don't know why the guy who owns George's Plaza, he'd be off of it.
The mill, the mill owns that, John Hollingsworth would probably be. Fine with something.
Would they need a couple acres of pocket area there or? With the Torres group, Heidi? The same people who own six twenty Spring Street own that?
Yes.
So that's the Torres group?
Yep, they own.
Peter Marigan.
Right there.
Yep, nice thought, down by the river?
Yep.
Accessible, right off of the Boulevard?
Yeah, right here.
No houses?
No, nothing.
Let's get it.
Well, let's talk to Peter Marigan.
There you go. They're prob- they're buildings for sale, they're selling all that property.
Yeah, so what if it sells, what's to say that it's not gonna happen the same thing that the uh?
What lands here because of the river or is it high enough? Is it a flood zone?
Oh, most definitely.
You think? Oh, yeah, all not Titan think of it, it's a flood zone, right? Lot of water going in that river.
Oh, yeah.
There's cricket. Must be chimney.
Hello, hello, are you on your way? You're on your way, we're running a, alright, we're running a little early, so we're ready for you. Okay, see you.
Try to think of something, oh, let's uh. Let's see, where else is that?
Remember Burger?
I'm checking land somewhere that we could put this up.
Um.
I wish.
Where else, I don't know.
Had it been.
Oh, who owns the garage on the side of Dunkin' Donuts?
I know who.
Who? Mister Mogo, who?
Charlie Harris used to own it. Right.
He still does.
It's the young lady. Is there a Charlie Harris Junior? Drives the little cars, you know what I mean? I don't know his name.
Gotcha.
The next one's John Crawford's.
Right, I I mean, I don't know what they that little, what their attention is with that little garage, but that's not a.
It was worthwhile, people sell anything, I think. They work on foreign cars over there.
I never see anybody there.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah. Well, I see a little something out there, but I know, I never see anybody, I never see anybody there.
A guy at Volkswagen Boss. A little French guy, you ever see that guy? Little tiny French thing?
You're talking about the Harris property?
Yeah. I don't think they did anything yet. There's a Saab boat for sale right there right now.
A what?
Blue Saab.
It's been there for years, probably.
No, it's a different one.
Oh, okay.
They move around.
They used to do irrigation, right?
Yeah.
And then they passed away or?
Yeah, somebody's taking care of that property, they live across the street from Chris Ready.
Chris Ready.
Do you know what property the Rose is talking about?
To put it on?
You know the garage, there's a house right behind that garage, it's on Old Thomas Avenue.
Right.
On the back of the property, is it clear?
Yeah.
They own all that.
I don't think they would be.
That wouldn't be such a bad place either.
No, cuz it's kinda out of.
Yeah, the problem is that property, the front part of it is all wet.
Yeah, but the back.
I think the back's been filled in. No, I'm serious.
Well, so am I. I just didn't think anybody would say it.
Oh, okay. This is it, right, yeah.
Yes, I know. That's why we're being careful.
Yes. And the other one, no.
More careful than usual. Oh, yeah.
And he wants to put it like back here.
Sometimes you forget.
There's a, there's actually a road right down the property line right there, yeah. No, it's his, yeah.
Well, yeah, he just can't, talk to people. No, Mike won't do anything.
Pissed off because then we won't do the property tax.
Oh, yeah, and I think.
That's a state mandate, think. And 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 then what do you replace it with?
Is that for real?
You come up with an idea of how to replace.
Because it's John, but you know, it's not. It's a federal amount of money that comes.
I know this much thing with the stock taxing me on my backhoe and stuff like that, I think that thing read out of town.
Any any possibilities on the Mannheim property?
Where?
Willie J.
Yeah, there you go, yeah.
That's done.
Forget it.
So you're just talking about back of the Dyton Rock upstairs? Because that that building's for sale and s- and the the owner has it in his mind that he can sell it as a proposed. One twenty-four one bedroom apartments upstairs or something, which I don't know how he'd ever get the septic.
I think that's his problem right now.
Problem, but aside from that. A dispensary upstairs, they've got an elevator, right?
They 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 were looking at it, they looked at it, they're not.
Oh, they're not interested in that?
They're not interested in that.
Now they told me they were.
When did they tell you that?
Well, when Princess told it.
They they drove in there. The day that I walked um Danny O's and.
Yeah, yeah, and Vicky told me that out of all the places that they look, they like Dyken Rock Plaza the best.
Oh, really? And they told me that they like that one down there best.
So they're probably telling you exactly what they want you to.
And it's outside the village overlay district, as you said.
That it, yeah, uh Dyken Rock Plaza would be.
So we could. So bad.
Wouldn't be too bad.
I don't get it.
Good thing I set my alarm early, I have to go to dentist right now.
Fell asleep after.
It's not such a bad area. My alarm went off, what's that?
The thing about it also is that if there were, if there were something like that drawing people in, well, then maybe the village overlay district would more likely become a village. As opposed to the ugly thing that it is now.
Right.
What about the paint book property?
What about it?
Just sold, right?
Did it?
No.
Just sold the equipment.
Yep.
Are you selling the rocks out front?
Yep, now I sell them rocks.
He sold all the rocks?
Yeah, all the granite sold. Cuz I went down and tried to steal some, they said no, it's stolen, sold. They wanted ten bucks a foot, I wasn't paying ten bucks a foot.
Yeah. Square foot?
Yeah, well, a foot. Three feet long?
You you're talking about the granite curvy.
Yeah, granite curvy.
That's a good price.
That's, no, that's granite curvy, used granite curvy.
Cost, what does that get you?
Uh yeah, you combine new, twelve, thirteen, fourteen bucks a foot.
I wanted ten bucks a foot, I said no. So then I waited, then I went back a couple weeks ago, they said, sold the all the.
How about the Jersey bag? What do you want for all of it?
Yeah, highly probable something.
Give me a couple thousand bucks, it's done.
Cause those no longer meet the the.
I wanted thirty feet, that's three hundred bucks, I said no, so I had a fire?
Oh, you're gonna make a fire pit?
Yeah. I want three hundred dollar one.
Go buy one of those kits, you'd be all sad.
Actually, there's a place in um Freaktown that was selling kits for two hundred bucks.
With boxware?
The metal.
I had a vision. Timmy's getting rid, get rid of uh Dyken Surplus, maybe he's thinking it's time.
Yeah.
Was he the son of the guy that?
Hey, what about Smith Hall, that's for sale now, that's it, too many offices there.
Yeah, library there would be nice though.
Yes, it would.
It would, that would be a beautiful library.
We're gonna get an eight million dollar library.
Yeah, okay.
Addition.
Right after I eat a million dollar police station.
It's not funny.
Wasn't the, weren't they proposing a new one for about two million?
What if we talk to Crawford?
Yeah, ten years ago.
Yeah, ten years ago?
Something like that.
What is land?
One of those landies got there.
Who's Crawford?
That's actually a good spot too.
Jack Crawford.
What's he own?
Where that backhoe is across the street from the garage that's.
The junkyard.
Oh.
I don't think he'll do anything, he he won't, he won't get rid of that.
No.
That's gonna be kind of a busy. Thing going in and out all day long.
Yeah, well, that's why. Like Rock is already right on one thirty eight, it's kinda set for it.
Yeah, two and a half acres over there?
That a lot of it is wet though, right?
Um, not really.
Yeah, there's a, there's a pond.
Yeah. The house actually sits on.
Taxes on on the.
The trailer.
The trailer.
Tax on manufacturing or distribution, the sale or?
We get it on ma- manufacturing, we do not get it on dis- dis- distribution. So in all reality, we would rather have them rent someplace than own someplace.
Where they're gonna grow it is where.
So Dyken Rock Plaza would be ideal.
But it's for sa- it was for sale signs, for sale?
No, it's for lease, for the the things. So, and I know Mister Hollingsworth would probably be in favor.
The time doesn't want the one, right?
Poor guy.
Oh, yeah?
Nine inch pizza.
Yeah?
Hundred and thirty milligrams each pizza.
I mean, I also bought behind CNN Pizza too, I, he has something behind there, doesn't he?
CNN?
CNN Pizza. Yeah, I feel there's a garage there.
Isn't that the vibe for a building permit to make it residential, based on the mixed use zoning?
Oh, oh, back there, that's right. And then I, you know what, I did think about that space with the apartment house there, that wouldn't be cool. That's cuz the apartment house, right?
Yeah.
So.
What about the house that belonged to the church or the diocese?
Who owns that?
The diocese.
Still?
The one next to the town garage?
But he lives there.
The, do they?
Yeah. Yeah, that's why they tore down the other house.
These dispensaries are in like professional type buildings. Yeah, so they knocked that one down and rebuilt.
Right.
Maybe Tim would be willing to pu- kick the post office out of this.
Yeah, post office would would have been available last year. That would've been a perfect spot.
Yeah.
A little small.
Hmm, nope. They're probably gonna be out of business in a couple of years. It's uh thirty-six hundred square feet there.
This one he's talking about?
Oh, this one, I was thinking about the one.
Yeah.
Oh, no, no, no.
That wouldn't hold enough to support the town.
I could see where the one down in South Dyton would close because it seems kinda pointless to have to.
So good, it's the best post office in this town.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I I I leave here and go there.
Yeah.
Instead of.
Who's he driving from, obviously he's not driving from his.
His business.
Right?
Well, you know, so much for being early, he'll be right on time. Sorry, cuz if we've heard of Marley, you know what I'm saying?
I'm all thoughts for places right now.
I am, I I've been thinking, like, the only thing I think is like Dyken Rock Plaza.
Why don't you call that guy, Eddie?
John, I will.
So we have to revise our uh our uh expansion of the mixed use zoning, uh that article.
Um, yes, they said that.
We need to make it really be the same as the original mixed use zoning article that we.
Well, Lisa did that one, so I'm not sure, yeah, but I so I.
I think that the original one addressed the lots that were on a, no?
No, we created the mixed use bylaw.
Yeah.
And then I believe all we, I I'll I'll look, I probably have it on my computer right now, but.
Yeah.
I get, I asked Lisa for the wording for this bylaw. I told her what we were doing, that's what she gave, that's um.
Yeah.
But then again, mister, that has happened to us in the past, and we weren't, we weren't wrong.
I can see where it could be a problem, but.
I understand.
All we gotta do is define it as a uh three hundred feet deep from the center of the road all the way down and.
And then that's it, okay.
More or less.
Yeah, but the original bylaws shouldn't, doesn't that, doesn't that have that in it? Or one lot deep or something, I forget what we.
It did.
And so. Is that a meaningless bylaw then?
No. I wouldn't think Lisa would.
Refers to the lots that have street frontage on the street and is what we had in mind, obviously.
I know you're thinking, Joe, I can hear you thinking over there about where to put this.
He is thinking.
I wish I didn't have the five year lease on the post office. They will end up by the house and lease the um, not not.
Yeah.
Lease the house. Knock it down, put a big building there, but I had no problem with that.
We're waiting for a person, yes. We could recess if you like.
Well, we get it on pause right now.
Oh, do you? Oh, so now we can say anything we want? Okay.
Yeah.
We've been a little, we're trying to be careful.
I have to cut out the house. And if I wanted to do another lot. Is I gotta do it now, it's maybe down the road, my daughter or something, it's not that it's going on the market. But I had Odie die a do. Got two plans and see which one you guys like better, before, you know, preliminaries and. Why draw something up that you guys don't like? Been in that chair, so I know what it's all about. I like this one cuz I think it's cleaner, but.
And this is the other lot?
Right.
And then this is all the farm land?
Right, this would all be the farm land. That one looks better, but I don't.
So you wanna pull one out, two house, do you?
Yeah.
Future house, right?
I I would have included that garage in lot one, but the thing is, I would probably add on that for storage for the business, for the farm, so.
Smart, yes.
So this is the whole whole castle here?
Uh, somebody else homes this.
It's just this section right here?
In this.
Oh, in that.
He wants to cut this out for a house lot. This is on the uh right side, the north side of the lane. Across from Mendoza, you know where it is.
There's a cemetery, Joe.
I thi- I think this one looks cleaner, yeah, you know? The other one kinda.
Kinda oblong.
Oblong, it's not, not clean.
That one's clean and that's the lot, boom, 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 then you can still farm around it.
Yeah.
I mean, they'll legally either ways or whatever.
Yeah, I know, but I just, you know, why draw something up and, cuz I mean, I can live with either one, but I just, you know. You guys gotta put your name on it and. Why do, you know, Otis, well, Rachel is the one that says, you know, I think this one's cleaner, and she went and did the survey.
So Rachel's doing the work over there now?
She's doing all the fieldwork, Odie Senior is back in drawing up the plans.
Oh, God.
Oh, is it?
Wow.
Eighty-nine.
Jesus.
But I mean, this, actually, one of the. Girls that work in the office. Um.
I see your face, I can't get.
She wasn't in the do boys, she was single. She's actually.
Oh, no.
She does a lot of the the drawing.
So it's actually seven acres back here?
Yeah.
And then plus this?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's.
Is there minimum acreage on that?
On APR?
Yeah.
Well, I got, no, there isn't, but there's, there's twenty-eight acres I'm putting in.
Okay.
Cuz there's, there's seven, seven acres on this side and behind here, I don't know why she didn't show it on the plan.
Yeah.
But there's another six and a half.
Yeah, I only thought that was.
Then uh Zenica has a two acre strip. Then I've got two acres in front of the council oak, and then I got five acres behind the council oak.
Lot of farming.
Some of the best land around, it's too nice, it's, well. I mean, it's probably some of the best septic sand in the world, but it's also some of the best farm, farmland, when they have the appraisal done on it. And they did the soil analysis, they said it's some of the best land east of the Mississippi to farm. That's why the state wants it, you know, which is, you know, that way they're gonna be. Yeah, it's good for me and it's also good for the town cuz.
Yep.
I, guys still get, the the, it'll be in sixty-one A, but it's taxed at the commercial rate, so. The town's gonna get good tax revenue out of it, they're not gonna have to deal with houses and.
Right.
Buses and roads and all that other lovely stuff that goes along with it.
Well, anybody else wants to bring houses? For the best of the town, they say.
Yeah.
You you got solar going up on the other farm, right? You've got solar going on up there?
We're ne- we're negotiating.
Okay. I'm just curious if that's why you you did this.
No, it's going in the back, if they, if they do it, it's in the back, way in the back.
They came in.
No, not for solar, this.
No, and then on the other one, not on the farm land. I got some land I was gonna put cranberry bog in. And.
Power Lane might be a good place for cranberries.
Well, no. No, the funny thing about it was, we couldn't, couldn't get a good source of water.
Uh-huh.
And I couldn't tap into the Coles River and make a, you know, dig a pond there. And I was, I was so depressed, but you know how it's so funny? Things work out because about three years after that, the market tanked and it hasn't come back through.
Yeah.
You're right.
Now they would work back, that was eighty, ninety dollars a barrel, now they're getting twenty-four.
Yeah.
And cost you fifty-one to produce them.
And Mr. Barrows over here selling his bogs around here. With eighty acres, there's a nice land over there.
And he's with Ocean Spray too, and they, they actually get a bit of, they're probably up around sixty, sixty-two barrels.
Yeah.
Dollars a barrel, which isn't big money, but at least you're still turning a profit.
Yeah, he's selling it, he just told me.
It's interesting getting a medical marijuana overlay on your property.
They're looking.
I've been approached on that, believe it or not.
Have you?
But then they decided uh. These old mills are the way to go, I guess, because it's, you bet a security. Griffin Greenhouse, the company I do all my greenhouse business with, they are so busy. Right now in Lowell, Lemonster, Lowell, Lemonster, Lawrence, and the old cotton mills.
Yeah.
Doing marijuana.
Yeah, we thought we had it done, but. The uh Princess Farm Facility didn't want it, ended up doing it for selling, so.
I thought it was going in the.
Spring Street, that's a growing.
Fulgiving, yeah.
Distribution. We didn't have, we had an area for uh as a distribution center, and we did the overlay, but. They won't do it, so now we gotta find another. Another area.
Now, how's this gonna work, am I, is it gonna be for medic- medic- medical, is it also gonna be for recreational?
No, medical is for now.
Cause it's funny, I went for my, when I went for my health card two months ago for my CDL license. First thing they said on it, on the uh medical form is. Marijuana is legal for recreational use in the state of Massachusetts. If you test positive, you automatically lose your CDL.
What the hell?
Don't take.
They're talking out of both sides of their mouth in the same sentence.
I think it's not federally approved.
No, that, exactly, that's why, but, and that's the first thing now they do. They've always done the urine test, but now they do a, a blood and a breathalyzer test when you go for your CDL.
Yeah, our guys uh go random testing uh.
But I mean, that's, you know, automatically. My insurance company hasn't made me, me do it yet with uh my guys, but uh. A lot of the insurance companies, you get more than so many employees, they'll randomly, you get a random drug test.
Not your field.
Yeah, to keep up.
Yeah, cool.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks Ken, have a good night. Okay Dave, let's go, come on, these boys are restless, I've been here a long time today.
You didn't have, you didn't have to dress up?
Yeah, sorry, got a lot of martial arts, I'm going a little late. Um, okay, so, well, I was back before the board a few years ago, it was pretty much the same plan that I had drawn up, I just made a couple additions to it. Just gonna pass it around a little bit, but.
So you just added some parking spaces?
I, I added some more parking in the front, and I figure if I keep them in and out of, this is where the road, where we pull into. Basically, we stopped in square one, it's for a flea market, we just wanna make sure that the parking and everything in the um, on twenty forty County Street is okay. The, when we first pull in, what we had proposed back a few years ago is parking right directly in front of the building. And essentially what we're gonna do is set up some cones so that we have like two rows of parking. Um, that way cars can get in and out, there's plenty of space there, it doesn't look like it on the picture, it's not really the scale, but. Not sure, I know that there's some sort of a requirement with uh parking spaces, like so many. Uh, you're allowed.
This is one day a week, right?
Yeah, this is just, just on Sundays, yeah.
Sunday, Sunday.
Uh, and then the, the vendors are gonna be, like right now I have some dividers coming down the middle of the parking lot. And the, the, the vendors are gonna be on the opposite side, so the cars would be well away from the vendors.
How many vendors do you have currently?
Uh, the past week that we had it, I think there was four vendors. So we anticipate it's gonna grow a little bit, I'm, I also anticipate that I'm probably gonna have to come back down here again at some point to re, you know. Redraw something, but um we're not gonna have very many vendors to, to start, I would say under ten. And once we're, once we get to that point, then we'll.
So they only have four vendors, it's more.
That's a lot, this is cool.
Okay.
Do we have any? Regulations regarding?
No, I think this, that, that it's just a procedure, I think that we should cons. The board should consider this probably a minor site plan review and. Prove as is and with the condition that if he ever assumes to get any larger adds, any new use, that he just comes back and sees us.
Right, so first we need a motion of, to decide if it's a minor. Site plan review.
I make the motion that it's a minor.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we need a motion to accept the site plan.
I make the motion to accept the site plan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And so that will be the.
Aye, Cable.
That will be the condition.
Goodnight, Cable.
That uh.
It's already cleared, right?
That uh, yeah.